We got our...
I can do it all.
Sorry. All right, Brett, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go ahead, Bob.
We're not in the mall roads area yet, north of town. Kind of starting to work on putting snow and cloud equipment together. Eventually it's coming.
You think?
They keep saying that we haven't seen the gap. Kind of getting ready for winter.
Ready? Point. Bob?
It's been so long since I've been here.
Why didn't it... I didn't write.
Well, I'm back again. Thankfully, no, I have anything else going on until December, but last week was a very intense incident management training class with the state of Montana. It worked well. Couple people from Dillon there, myself, BJ Gross, he ended up on the same team. And what they do is they basically teach you how to run an accident. And they make it stressful and throw a lot of stuff at you, but it was good. Glad I took it. They covered pretty much all the expenses on it. So, back here. Got a bunch of stuff to go through that backs up, you know, court surveys, that type of thing. But when I'm away, I'm always able to stay up on phone calls and emails and all that kind of stuff. So, not too far behind. And what else? I go to sleep at that.
Okay? Dylan?
Okay, I've got electricians coming in this week. They're gonna start working on getting the breeding barn off of my arena lights, so some independent power. Winter step as it comes on, and then hopefully if Sky can get some time in or two, we'll work on some parking enforcement and other signage issues. Other than that, it's about all I've got.
John?
So, we had the electrician, yes, around Friday. He'll be back today to work on those that are running the power supply for that. And we, last week, we had a lot of jail issues with the toilet. We ended up replacing the seal and the air control, and it's still leaking. So, they're gonna be coming in this week to hopefully find where this leak's coming from. We also were supposed to get the shower in last week, but that is on hold until either later this week or next week. Because when they sent the showers back, first time, they sent the screws that they had bought with the set of showers. So, they had to reorder screws, so we're waiting on the screws on that. It's been a fun one with the jail. We also had cameras installed last week, a three-day process of public health, so they're all up and secure now. I'll show the lady how to kind of run her room when she gets free moment. We also had a lot of stuff with the generator last week. They ended up running the piping over the roof and down through, down by the jail, got it drilled through. So, we can start hopefully eventually running the cables for that. They're supposed to try to this week, they didn't get to it last week, is run the cables and drill through the courthouse to connect to the panel downstairs in the basement. So, when I find out more on that, that's kind of the process. And then it's pretty much just kind of maybe slowly start hooking up and running cables for the generator. We also had the propane tank filled, so it is ready to go for when they get it all ready, they can test it. And so, that's another step closer to the generator this week. Just a reminder, it's daylight savings time, so I'll call your box back on the Saturday, that's clock tower. We did Halloween lights for the week, so they're orange and purple up there. And then Monday next week, they'll be teal for... No, they're actually gonna be a teal for autism, for just the day. We're gonna have autism for just the third of, I think it's the third of November. And then we'll put up the grave for the veterans. That's all I got.
George?
Finished shooting up inspections, running around still, and still have something to do before the end of the year. But this morning, I have to work on quarter three audit, which came from Helena last week, and get all those inspections pulled, so we can get our check reinforcement for that. Pretty much that's all. Have a donut, by the way.
Thanks, George.
Thank you.
The grounds have been slowly processing ballots that have been trickling in. And I'll be gone on this afternoon after District Two meeting over in Freeport. So, we have that mentioned this next year, so we're in the planning stages of that. So, I will be leaving up, probably about 11:30 or 12:00.
Lloyd?
Just been busy with immunization clinics, we've been kind of running around. Did the big whole kind of late September, and then we had our last drive-through last Friday, so that's, you know, that's it for drive-throughs, then we did two. And then we've been busy Wednesdays, start our normal immunization clinic, so we'll still keep going at that. My nurse is out doing immunizations today for Beehive, and then we might be doing some for Pioneer. And few challenges, just depending on what they have going on. It's just been, I know they have struggled with turnover and stuff, so we'll see. And then we had our behavioral health coordinator start last week. And public health interventionist will start on Monday, so we come today. And we should be back up to a regular four full-time positions filled. And then we got a bonus part-time with the behavioral health coordinator. So, that feels good, you know, to get, to have everyone, all the positions filled.
Amber?
So, I think we got most everything wrapped up over at the shop. Everything's put away except for the two machines that I gotta take two years' notice to get worked on. Thanks to Justin, we were able to get a couple of the trucks parked over in the commercial building. So, they're not sitting out for another winter until we get everything moved into the building. Other than that, working on grants and getting stuff finalized and getting some money in.
Floor coming along?
It's coming, at least the new part looks pretty good. The old part, we still got somewhere to go, but it's getting there. We're seeing some forward motion, so that's good.
Dan?
This week, I don't have anything too new. I am working on updating our wireless communication ordinance to include all forms of energy. It hasn't been updated in about 20 years, so I need to get with Sky here soon to help them come out. And yeah, that's about where I'm at.
Best for last, Greg.
Yes. We've got the Dillon Rifle Missile Agent Agreement later today. Y'all will have a copy of that. Just a few changes extending that lease term. Busy, busy week in court this week. We've got some pretty significant cases that are gonna be before the court tomorrow and also on Thursday. There is a matter that the county may need to be involved, but we will know more later today. That has to do with Raymond Graham's deal with Eric Winland and the city and everything else. So, just because the election administrator may be, may be brought into it a little bit. So, if she is, then we'll need to depend on the decisions that she's made in the past. Yep. So, yeah, staying busy. No takers yet on our position that we have open. But yeah, still hoping that the right person comes along.
You getting any?
None yet.
What do you want? Either one of you guys got anything? Have a good week, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
We can always, but I think that, you know, right now, if the horse gets on or get shot, it's gonna be a lot.
Right. True.
How long bench are you looking at?
Well, the existing fence just goes around that shooting area, right? And out a hundred yards.
Yeah, I've been up there, yeah, but I don't know what pitch bench is.
Oh, that, and you see on that picture that he's got outlined, it's, you go out there, further left, and it's, it's a lot larger.
Okay, call it, over there, in our way, if you will, when they hand the sheets over. I don't remember the acreage, hundred, hundred seventy eight, or is it, is it hundred seventy five, for some reason, I don't like, seven, oh, hundred sixty nine point seven one. So it's a homestead, basically.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's two parcels.
Two eighties?
Uh, it's a one sixty and like ten or something.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Next time, discussion, we'll, 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 and Sky worked out the lease.
Yes, sir, I mean, basically.
Forty years.
Yeah, basically, a lot of the terms are the same, uh, change the lease term for forty years, uh, when the land was given from the BLM to the county, it did state in that deed that it was used as a gun club. I don't know if that's something that would be enforceable in perpetuity, but I think that everybody's in agreement that it's a good thing to have for our communities, provides good tools of recreation and, and, uh, giving them the opportunity to have a, an extended lease so that they can, uh, move forward with expansion and get some grants and do some different things, I think it's a good idea. Uh, I've made a few other changes, uh, you know, the, uh, under number five, management, uh, just added that they would, you know, incorporate safety rules and measures, which I'm sure that they already do. Under number ten, at the very end, I added a section, um, I left the, the insurance stuff the same, but at the very last sentence, I just added that if the regulations should change, uh, that requires additional insurance requirements, that they would secure that. Uh, under number sixteen, uh, I've, I've reworded that just a little bit, uh, as far as inspection of the property, because I've been a member of the past, and I think many of us are, uh, I just took out the notice requirement, but I think if the county needed to, you know, go out there and inspect something, uh, you know, it's gonna be a situation where we might be out there anyway to do it something, and so having to give, you know, weeks notice or whatever it is. And then the notice, uh, requirement number seventeen, uh, just that they would, uh, the gun club would keep us up to date on who to contact with the phone number, uh, and if their address should change. Uh, other than that, the most sensitive change to this lease from the last one is the term, uh, you know, legislature updating and changing the ability to the, the county to lease something for forty years. Well, it's, uh, like I said before, I think it's a good opportunity for them to expand and do some, do some new things out there.
Yeah, Mike, as we, we discussed last week, I mean, the, the principal purpose for the lease extension is to make, make our applications for grants and funding look more favorable. They explicitly state long-term leases are, are more desirable than short-term leases, which they don't put a number on them. So, you know, we did this, you know, the proposal that came back from Tom, and Sky was, you know, that forty years would be, that's definitely, you know, sufficient for that.
Does the state law say forty now, or what's it say?
Forty.
Forty.
When that's, I mean, in your language, then you can just say, this is the maximum, that's the maximum we can do per month, you know.
Yeah, because that's just the same issue with the golf course when they tried, when they built the clubhouse. They went to borrow money from the banks, and it was a twenty-year note with a ten-year lease, they didn't like that, I mean, the bank wasn't gonna do it, we, we had to.
You created.
Yeah, create, that's, create, you know, do that, sort of the language, oh, if I mentioned, this only makes sense. And just, all I'm trying to do is, you're changing the due dates on this thing here, it's no big deal, except for our secretary down here to collect all this money. All of our leases are due December thirty one, so January, you pay the annual fee.
We certainly changed it to December thirty one.
If it can fix that way, I mean, I, I don't know how to do that, and that's just ease for whoever who's down in that office collecting.
Easy to do. I can go over and read, I can go pull this up on my computer and type seven thirty.
So it's a new lease as of today, but the payments are due in January every year? That, I mean, can, can we, I mean, that's just for, I mean, 'cause we've got the, uh, the hockey club, the, the search and rescue, the bike club, now we got the pickleball club, and, you know, to keep, keep back with their, all spread all over the world.
Sure, so what's the, what's the best date for that, December thirty one?
These leases end on December thirty one above, above, there, I don't know how you even word that, but, so they, the lease payment comes due in January every year. Then she can do them all, she usually send bills out, that's why I was asking, still goes Art Skinner? So it all gets done at one time, she doesn't have to do it every month. And not the, and, and the payment isn't different, it doesn't matter to me one way or another.
We could, we could do the payment any time, so.
In any amount, uh, and the reason was, you look back at the first time you guys did this, everybody paid a buck. And that was with the soccer club, they paid a buck, and when they came due, after Garth was here, or some, somebody'd stand up, put a buck on the table. And we would lose track of Art Skinner's name, and that's what happened to the soccer club, that thing got paid for about ten, fifteen years while nobody was there. It went into bad disrepair, and all of a sudden, the county got a big bill for the power, kind of power and everything, we had to do. So that's why we've gone to the annual ones, more than twenty bucks, unless you guys wanna pay twenty bucks. All of our leases been caught up now, pays fifty bucks a year. The pickleball guys, the bike club guys, these guys have got the little ones, search and rescue, the golf course, everybody. It's not a game breaker, but it's once again, just for simplicity, it's forty years from now, the person down there collecting hasn't even been born yet. Everybody gets a fifty dollar bill for these leases, if you want to. I, I think it makes sense, I'm sort of anal that way, if, if, you know, everybody's, everybody's the same. If we could change that date, and if, uh, I don't know, fifty bucks break in.
You want the lease termination date to change, right now I've got it, Thursday of October, twenty sixty five. Do we wanna make it December thirty first?
If you can.
Easy.
And then that's what she sends our bill over, January.
That'd be twenties, thirty first to twenty sixty four.
I mean, when you guys are shaking your hands for that thirty dollar raise, but.
Well, I've just gotta take it back to John. Well, I've just gotta take it back to John and Art. Now it's gotta, now it's gotta go back through the thing. I should do that on a.
Well, no, this is our lease, we put fifty bucks on it, that's what's, I, I don't know.
They need it today.
I don't.
I think that if you guys voted and approved this the way it was, it's not gonna be effective until it's executed.
Yeah.
So if you guys voted and approved it, signed it, give it to them, they can take the lease, the executed lease to go get it signed and recorded whenever they.
Today.
Whenever they get the okay for the fifty and the, and the due date of the payment needs to be December thirty first as well, is that correct? Is that what I'm thinking? Okay.
Still hasn't expired.
Each year.
Run and get real quick. And then what do you, what do you want to do with number seven?
Oh, with the fencing?
Yeah, 'cause it says you get, you're leasing the whole hundred seventy acres and the fencing says it will be fenced. That one probably does not need to be, but if it says you will do it.
Right.
I don't know, that's your call. Sky, it's never been done for ten years, they die?
I don't know what's out there. Parry's running cattle on the.
They got cows and horses.
On the west side?
Yeah, horses, well, cattle or horses, but horses has been up the gun range before.
They, they go up in there when it snows, there is moisture, but they pass that, they're never in there.
But like I said, I could, you know, take both the.
If required, they're responsible?
Sure.
Something like that? If, if, if necessity rises, if the necessity rises, you guys gotta build a fence, not be great camp. That's all I'm done.
So what if I put language in there at the very beginning, if necessary, to prevent livestock of getting in, the property herein leased by the gun club will be fenced by the gun club?
I think I'd put that in there just to save everybody, 'cause them damn horses was up there once before.
And we do all the rest of this work, then they're gonna come back, right?
What if you plant green grass?
Well, we're not planting any grass.
You'll seed the burn and all of a sudden it'll be.
Something to your neck, yeah. Yeah, I can make those changes in three, four minutes.
That'd be fine, and then we could sign it, they could pick across the hall and then we could have them. Recorded.
I make a motion, we approve this forty.
Go ahead.
I move, we approve this forty year lease that the gun club with the three or four changes we've talked about this morning.
Second.
All the papers, you go by.
All right. I'm gonna make these changes right now, print off a copy, come get your signature.
And then I can just hand that to you guys. Oh, are you guys gonna have to notice a meeting and get all kinds of stuff, or are they all around things at the gun club?
No, we have our annual meeting coming up in January, so we'll just advise the board and the members in that board of member meeting that this was the action we take, moving forward with, you know, facility improvements, but other than that.
Will that work if I go to make these changes, print it off, get your signature and?
Yes.
Art Skinner in that wagon.
Which one have we put in there?
Art Skinner's the one that's in there now.
Yeah.
Skinner's.
I'll put it right back in there.
That piece of secretary treasure.
Forever. Won't you wait?
It's a lifelong term. Wait.
I'll be right back.
Hand to do that, look out.
And that lady from Sykes Insurance comes over every once in a while, Art Skinner from Sydney, is Art Skinner's daughter-in-law.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Sound good? Yeah, well, he gets back west side and then we'll walk across the hall and they said they can, they can take it right then. I already asked. They could, yeah, get it across the hall.
I got a grandson that's down in Twin Falls, but his job is this, they buy him all over the country building these gun ranges.
Yeah.
He's been going to Kentucky, he's a big equipment, they build these backgrounds and backstops. Darren has been to Oklahoma, they're working on that contract, they're trying to get up in hell with the law enforcement academy, trying to get their own gun club. So I don't know whether he, Harvey Miller's probably can handle one this size, the ones that are doing it, I think are big. And that's the only requirement that he says that they, every, I think every year he's gonna be tested for lead, lead dust or whatever, because must be that many bullets and stuff that they.
Yeah, we want people up there gonna be affected by lead dust.
I mean, it was, you know, moving that dirt, I mean, that was unreal, but I guess that's what they test them for.
Yeah, and, you know, we, we actually, there was a guy who supposedly was gonna talk to John Earp about mining the lead out of our shop hall area at the trap club. And, because our shop hall area is across the, the irrigation canal, but John's never wanted us to do anything about that, so it's like, so, but this guy showed up out of the blue, said he had a meeting with somebody from Seattle who's representing John, I says, are you sure about that?
Boy, I can watch that.
You don't mine the lead out of?
Yeah, so, you know, it's, it has been since nineteen fifty six, nineteen fifty seven, since I last mined it, so there's seventy five, roughly seventy five years of shop hall out there, but.
My, my old man got a couple hundred pounds up there, too. He was up there a lot, I know.
But, you know, guys, you know, right now it's too, it's too expensive, it's not cost effective to reload shot, you know? They go ahead and mine it anyway, just, if anything, just to put it like gold and silver, put it in the back room and leave the fifty-five gallon drums, you know, there to, for the future, so.
They must just sift it or something, you know?
Yeah, they do, they, typically this guy, the guy who's doing this one, typically only goes down about four inches, but he had two, well, three concerns, right? First, that it's an alpha field, it's been turned over probably over the years, and then irrigation makes it kinda hard to do it until, you know, either get it dry in the spring or dry in the fall. And then third, being that's how long it's been since we've mined it, might need to go deeper. So with all those, the three factors, it's like, and he, and he isn't one, his, his cost model on his operation doesn't really, it doesn't pay him to go deeper than four inches. It all depends on number of shot, the number of shots, right, that are done, like what the club does in a year. So we only do about twenty thousand rounds, you know, in, in a year. So it takes a basis, they used to usually looking for about a million rounds, so. So we kind of slow roll that here. We're not that big.
I'll make a backdrop.
So is this a five acre dig or a ten acre dig or?
Well, it's about, so about three hundred yards past, past the canal.
Wow, that's a long way.
Yeah. So we actually sent a letter to John Earp offering, you know, understanding, right, this was his deal, it's his property, this has been the understanding over the years, but, you know, we, we basically proposed if we wanted to lease or purchase, us to lease or purchase that three hundred yards across shop hall area. We wouldn't dictate any kind of change to his operation, just it would be our responsibility and then, you know, we could mine it and restore it, you know, for, for hay purposes, so that's what he's doing, but we've not heard back from him yet, so.
That's the least bit worried.
Yeah.
Three hundred yards, that's a long way.
It's a good chunk.
Really?
Well, part of it is due just to the fact that it falls away from the shop, it may only go.
And then wind blow over.
Whether that wind or whether that ditch is filled with water or not really affects how that bird flies out there, depending which way the wind flower.
Yeah.
Plus we think, oh. Especially yesterday.
Yeah.
How many members, if you will?
About a hundred.
There's a hundred at the trap club.
Yeah. And we, you know, our membership comes out for our spring league in end of April, May, right when we finish up the four, or right after Memorial Day. And we, you know, we started a women's league last year, last summer, had about twenty-five ladies come out and six of them this year went up to the state shoot in Helena for a couple days. So it's a, it's a separate organization from like amateur trap association and Montana State Trap Association, but it's strictly dedicated to the women. So, you know, we've met some gallows, had form, it started out at Calistow, and we just adopted their rules and format and offered it to our ladies and they, they love, they love coming out and shooting because it's a dedicated night for them, so none of the guys were around, none of the sons were around, but the moms, the daughters, the granddaughters and the grandmas come out. So a pretty good stretch of, you know, the age group that shoots. And John and I just opened things up and just called you and let us know if you need anything, and you'd help and take care of the whole thing.
You were actually five minutes.
He's been traveling, he walks, he walks slower.
I heard you say four, I just.
Fred took a while. I'm blaming Fred.
There's that big, the cop. So Art's standing there. Change the old dates, change the fencing.
So like I said, I'll take the action to talk to John and Art about the, about the lease payment as well as the, you know, the question and concern around the fencing and if there's anything we need to discuss, we'll come back and address you this.
Okay.
Okay?
Just the copy.
Very fresh.
Right here. Oh, okay. Oh, yep.
We all get to sign this. Just have them print their name under here.
Okay.
And by it's stamped with their title.
Yeah.
All right. Good deal.
Perfect.
I'll just do it on the desk over there and. So you get that, you get that sign. Number? Can we put that on there after they sign it?
After I get signs, I can take it over there to get recorded or whoever takes it over here. You just go with the next number unless they were only seven.
You could follow him or he's headed over there right now.
Well, you have to sign first.
Before they all, before they all record it, will they know or you'll, we'd have?
I can tell that I was.
What, no.
The, on the edge, she makes me write what I.
They're not gonna do it right now, they're gonna go get the signature.
Oh, he's, he's gonna sign. I send the vice president, I don't think he's signed it, so.
He's gonna. I don't know if you need to talk to him.
No.
Sign it by the life. Bring me a copy also so I can get back in.
Three times.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, one time they was talking, trying to build an indoor one out there, soccer field property out there, it'd be, goddamn, that'd be the fencing, shooting right into the golf course.
The PowerPoint thing up there, they showed me at the hospital, all this stuff, like that thing, and then they turn it into, they put it on a map. Maybe it's this one only, it'll blow it up. But they're energetic and it's a good thing, really good thing. I know, uh, Noah Hillrith from the proper medicine lodge drives all the way out to go up there and shoot.
Really?
For the lit with this ladies thing.
Hold the trap part?
Yeah, her son, of the trap club, and her son is probably, I'm guessing sixteen maybe?
Yeah.
And he, he is headed. He's on some kind of kids thing up there.
Yeah. I think when I was a kid, I was in every trap club in Montana.
Did you set trap?
Some, a little bit, not much, 'cause went with the old men because he, where he lived could shoot traps. And he only had one eye, which is really unusual for a good trap shooter, to be able to shoot with one eye.
Oh, he, he got, hurt his eye at a young age, so he adjusted.
Yeah.
Boy, I got a dandy thing. Harvey Reynolds, he wasn't feeling good at it. And he went into the doc and all that stuff and they diagnosed him with this COVID stuff and they hospitalized him and they put him on a respirator and everything else, got the gumcha of his lungs, it was settling in his lungs, and that's the worst thing, that's what killed Kenny girls.
Yep.
Killed his lungs, some kind of fluid. Anyway, they got him nothing about, but then, his. it is.
We good to go? Okay.
Yeah, go ahead. Uh, next item will be inter discussion act, do a DUI task force invoice.
Um, so I was presented a, this is not one I have. I, I, I had a big pile, a pile, um, from SilverRides DUI Task Force, um, in order to pay the drivers. Um, in the past, Maria has put a spreadsheet together like this, which Maria is our vice president, vice chair. Um, she has put together a spreadsheet, easy to pay, um, simple. This year I was presented a packet, I had to go through it in order to pay our drivers. We are two months, we were two months behind. That was given to me last Tuesday, Tuesday before that, sorry, it was the day before my grandma's funeral. Um, we tallied it up, we are at $16,360 for drivers. Ooh. Um, why I'm here today is because we had a meeting on Tuesday and we had three people. I can't get a quorum, um, for Silver, for DUI Task Force. Um, sorry, back up. This is Monique Schofield, this is, she's our chair for DUI Task Force. Sorry.
That's okay.
Um, I'm balanced. There are some concerns that I have with the invoices that I was presented. And a lot of it is because I've worked for Beaverhead County long enough to know that when you have a statement, you need invoices to go with those statements. I had asked Maria to bring them to me because I felt that they needed to be coded properly in order to be paid, like in order for them to go to Becky, to be paid. Um, and that wasn't Becky's job to code them because she's got enough on her plate. Um, so that's not the problem I have, but I have, what I have in front of me and what I can't discuss in a DUI Task Force meeting because I don't get, because we don't get a quorum, is that, um, several things. SilverRides, um, with $21,100. If I were to pay everything that is in front of me, um, I don't have enough money. Uh, I just, I don't have enough money. Um, I have it here. I have $21,046. On top of that, we have a pledge that we will give the police department $1,000 for their support for Liberty, which makes me at $22,000, which, so I'm overdrawn. Um, I paid, I did pay the drivers, well, the checks are written right now, they're waiting for approval from you guys. Um, because I felt that two months waiting for them to be paid was, was not proper. Um, we have $720 in dispatch. We have some invoices through to 3D for some copies, which is $350. Um, and then there are some receipts in here from Maria on a, Maria presented a $1,700, $2167 invoice, uh, spreadsheet. Um, out of that, I have $281 that I can prove with invoices or with receipts. Um, there are things on here that wasn't approved with SilverRides or with DUI Task Force, such as Miles, uh, making copies, which, that I don't have an invoice for. And then 89 hours for Maria. I have 50 hours from Natalie, Natalie Paulback. She helped Maria shadow in order to take over for them next year. Mom's story short, she is not going to. Um, 50 hours there. Um, and then I have some receipts here of question that, there is an invoice here for a QR code and the QR code didn't work. The QR code was, uh, invoiced out 30 days prior to, no, 14 days prior to fair starting. It was free for 14 days. I don't know what happened after that, but that QR code went to a 12-year-old boy at 2:00 in the morning. And there have been many excuses not, um, there have been many excuses manipulating it that wasn't her fault, as in Maria's fault, and Maria was responsible for that QR code. Um, so we're at the point where we don't know what to do because we don't have approval to do these, these things without the proper documentation, um, without, like, there is a list of, of things that she has done, but no hours that are attached to it. And it felt that if we're going to have, if we're going to have receipts to go with statements, then we really need to have hours that go with a spreadsheet of what you're going to do. Natalie did it, I commend her for that. Um, but there are, there are so many red flags in my hand that I'm concerned. And as a DUI Task Force treasurer slash secretary, um, I don't want to speak for Monique, but as a chair, we feel that there's just way too many red flags to, to just make that decision to pay. Um, and we, this is a Beaverhead County Board also. You guys sign off on us to approve our budget, um, that, that report has to go to the state and we all time, ultimately have to report to the state also. Um, so we need guidance.
We can't pay anything with approved receipt.
It tells the truth. I put that one.
Who's all that, it's the board.
Um, so Monique is our chair, Maria is our vice chair, I am the secretary treasurer, Skye, uh, our Beaverhead County attorney, the city attorney ideally, the sheriff, the, uh, police chief. And then we have 600 of us as a board members.
Well, number one is how many, how much do you get paid for doing this? I know, and that's what I said, but I'll tell you, one of the things is, is when you're paying a vice chair to run this thing, that, that's, I don't even know if that's right. There was this getting paid makes, can make the decisions to have a vote on this. Usually if you've got somebody to do it, I mean, that's what, uh, I know they struggled out at the fair a lot time doing that when Pete was doing that. He sits on the fair board and they hire a fair board member to do this stuff. It's, it's questionable. But number one, and that's, that's part of this. Uh, I don't, uh, like I said, there's, I, you know, this cash report isn't up to date. We can buy to get a new current one, but we cannot pay past what cash is in there.
21, I have $21,046 or something.
Of what, budget or cash?
Cash. I look at cash. 21,425. I don't look at budget. So if I can give you just a little history, how it was supposed to work this year is, um, we wanted to take it out of the hands of just one and put it into kind of a subcommittee type situation. Um, and that is how, what we voted on, that's what we understood was happening, that is not what happened. So, um, if I stay on this board, and I think you're in the same boat, there, there are ethically, there are just some obstacles that I just don't feel comfortable with. So what I would like to see is us take it from one person getting compensated for this and put it into a subcommittee so that we've got some accountability and some, um, clear direction on how we're going to operate this. Because one of the other disconnects, and I made it very clear, uh, we made it very clear multiple times, this is a Silver Ride campaign and what was happening this year was basically a taxi service. I was getting, I sat in dispatch, um, one night and was getting phone calls from the hospital. Um, they were taking, I saw text messages where they were dropping people off at the bars. They were picking people up at the campground and taking them to the fairgrounds. And I said multiple times, we, that is not the mission of this program. And so what, but what is frustrating and I think a little bit concerning to us is that I don't know what was disseminated to the drivers. And so here we sit as the county agency going, okay, but we've got people that have been told one thing and are thinking they're going to get paid. Um, and yet it does not align with what I feel should be the mission. I do not feel like we should enable people to drink. We, if they're sober or if they are drinking and they need a ride home, that's one thing. But if we're going to be picking them up from home and driving them to the bars, we've now become an extension of the problem, which defeats the whole purpose, in my opinion. Now, the rest of the board actually does not agree with that. There are some who think that we need to keep them from having their cars. I'm not going to babysit people like that. I'm a, a mental health therapist, I'm all about accountability when it comes to addiction problems. So my, my, my thought was, we pump the brakes and go, okay, we want clarification from you that what we understood as the goal of the program was to help people who were at the bars or inebriated going home or to a hotel or someplace where they're not going to be going back out. We're going to give them rides. And then that's where we basically stop all services. We don't extend it out to making it a taxi service. We don't extend it out to hospital, rides home for patients that are being discharged from the hospital, which kind of a safety and risk and compliance background in healthcare, your liability shoots up through the roof when you do that. You cannot do that. I mean, you can if you want, but I can't support it and I won't be a part of it. So, um, but anyhow, uh, my point in all of this is to say, we know, um, that absent clear, clear confirmation that what has been submitted is actually valid, we are going to go back and say, okay, we will pay what we feel like we're obligated to pay. I feel like we're obligated to pay the drivers because they've been told this is what they're going to get paid for. We are obligated to pay vendors who have submitted a valid invoice. But anything that is questionable, we are going to go back and say, we've been told, we are not allowed to pay these unless we can get some confirmation as to the validity and the necessity. Because there are also some duplicate charges.
September runway.
It's a headache, how about that? It started out with really good intent, but I think it has, it, I think the vision for probably what you understood and also what I understood has kind of gone from the only place where we want to be.
Well, two or three years ago, they blew the budget and came here for some money because of this thing with the drivers. And that's when we found out then, you know, I thought we made it loud and clear that, no, you do not take people's to the bars.
No.
And I, it was, it was stated from the fairness of the bars. So I think that's sort of what they, well, we never added the word from home or from the motels. And, you know, like I said, this is getting to be a taxi service.
That's simple, that says, the little card at the bar that says Silver Ride Home. They're a taxi service, it's a free taxi service, it's the county paying for it, basically.
And, you know, good, bad or different, if it saves lives, I mean, that's, but here's, here's the kicker. At least this, this is county admitting county accountability, but it comes from DUI charges over in courts. And it comes from donations, some donations from the bank, and that's where this came from. It's not per much tax money, we, we're doing that to do that, and that's the question. So we appoint a tax, of, of DUI task force. And if that task force comes to the agreement that they're going to hire this thing out and they're going to be a taxi service for people, uh, I guess so be it. But if they're going to do that, they've got to operate within a finance of a budget. They don't get this bold as budget and it goes bigger to it here. So.
Charge to pick up. Well, if it's a sober ride home, that's the one we get.
They always, they only get the sober ride. I mean, that bank wouldn't give anybody to haul people to it.
Well, I think that's what.
I mean, that'd be crazy.
I would like to support for is to just say, can we please go back to, do you support us going back to the original mission, which is SilverRides, home, period, end of discussion, not a taxi service, not going to take elderly parents home, not having to get patients from the hospital. And to let the, the board know, let the committee know, this is what the commissioners have directed us to do. We're going to stay within that mission and that directive and then the, the financial cleanup, I think I can handle that. That's not a problem. I just want affirmation from you that we're, we, and those on the board that agree with us, are on the right track. Because if you want to expand it, that's your right, this is your board. And we serve at the pleasure of the, of the commissioners, but I just don't feel like that's what, we're in alignment right now with what we want.
And then that, when you have to hire these drivers, they specifically got to know, I don't know, on a three-by-five guard, what they can and can't do?
Well, yes. Um, there was some problems with the, the way the drivers were selected this year.
Do you have a mission statement that says what exactly you're supposed to do and not do? I mean, what you're supposed to do? Kind of.
Yes. Kind of, but not like defined as what you can't do.
Isn't that something that you should do internally?
Well, we have the mission statement that's, that's providing for, for Safe Rides Home. Honestly, that's, that's.
Instead of Safe Ride Home.
Past that, there's nothing that's set in stone yet. I mean, yeah, we're in our third year of this big program to do. And learning as we go with so much manipulation prior, um, to set boundaries now.
If it just keeps getting abused, the donations will dry out.
Well, I know for a fact if they know they're.
It's behind the scenes that's getting abused and it's not being seen, is the theme. And so there's so much deceit.
Yeah, without a doubt.
Well, and that's the problem we're having, is that, that even if we, um, try to, and tackle that part, then that manipulating, we've, we've been in meetings to where it's been manipulated and, and gaslighted back upon us that we were the problem. Um, so when you're dealing with people like that, then you're, then you're stuck not making any progress. She doesn't think she's doing anything wrong. And I'm not trying to point one finger, but there is one person that is, is causing us problems.
Pretty moment.
So how do you handle that and still politically survive this small town? And all of the nuances of everybody who wants to have anything, and you go, okay, we're going to just pull back. We're going to have a subcommittee. We're going to refocus on our mission, which is SilverRides Home. The commissioners have supported that and have directed us that that is our focus.
Yeah.
I just thought that's all I need to hear and then we will go with it. And then if anybody on the board doesn't agree with that, they're welcome to come talk to you about how they think we should expand that because law enforcement does think we should, and I actually don't agree with that. And I feel like that then moves into enabling and I don't want to enable.
Law enforcement thinks we should expand it. Be a taxi service?
Some do. They feel like we should eliminate people's ability to have a car or a reason to have a car, but I feel like that, that's overstepping, that's over. Yeah, there's, they have autonomy and like you said, choice. And so at some point. At some point you have to have self-control, right?
That's like babysitting.
Exactly. And it's expensive. And that's the other thing is I don't really feel like we want the impression that Dylan's going to be the channel where if you show up, we'll take you to drink and then we'll take you home and we'll babysit you through the process. I don't feel like that's the impression.
I want you breakfast tomorrow morning.
He wants to come take you home and. So, so are we in great agreement then? You support going back to the original mission, which is SilverRides Home? which is SilverRide's Home, clearing up any miscon, or inconsistencies with the invoicing, following the county policy, which you were gonna pull for me, and then getting a subcommittee to handle anything moving forward?
Yeah, very much so.
Okay.
And then the deal is to, the board needs to clean up this of paid membership or paid, people that are making the decisions getting paid. That's not, that, that's a problem. She should be the one that, you're gonna contract out if, if that's the case. You've got twenty thousand dollar budget to do in this project, in this court. You don't sit on the board and make a decision, especially if you're gone.
Yeah.
To be the boss of the organization and, and you're financially compensated for it. That's not, that's not the way a volunteer board should do it.
I don't vote one. I'm ready to look that right up. And this.
And two, this demands to no sideboard. SilverRide is one of your projects, huh? I mean, you do some other financial things we're not doing.
Well, we, we, we do, and this year we added, we enhanced our scholarship program and we supported law enforcement by hiring, helping them pay for their reserve deputies on Labor Day weekend, which was a big gap that they were dealing with. And so we helped with that.
So that's the money you need to spend before?
Well, that's been taken care of.
You've got that.
Yeah, that's taken care of. And then the Silver Ride campaign, I feel like because there's been some liberal interpretation of rides and not what I would consider a good method of capturing who provided transportation where, that needs to be completely revamped so that we can control that because I think we should definitely drop that payout number down considerably.
Well, it's named wrong to start with. It shouldn't be Silver Ride. It should be drunk ride.
So that, I think there's some simple things that we could do to mitigate that cost, but we need to be able to control it. And I really honestly thought that by making it very clear what our mission was and redirecting and focus on that, that we would see that materialize this year, and it was not the case. And I actually sat in dispatch on a Saturday night and was very surprised at what I saw. So I'm like, this can't continue. And if it continues, maybe I'm just not supposed to be part of it.
And two, I, yeah, that's, I said, I, and I, it's funny, I, I guess I, I don't know. The tips these drivers, I'm assuming that, that's quite, quite a financial thing too. So we're paying them on top of that.
Yeah.
So that's why I said, if they're gonna be doing this, hauling them from X downtown, that should not be the responsibility. And if they get tipped to do it, I don't know how you handle that. That's what you're saying. I guess if they do that.
Then you know, if they're, if they're supplying a taxi service from their home to the bars, they should pay whoever's doing that, taking that ride, should pay for doing that.
And then it goes to the next step is, is once you've learned that, then you could put your own QR code up and start doing it yourself. Do it for, as a for-profit mission, let them call it Uber. You know, perhaps you could do Uber rides here for, and, and put the responsibility on the person who's drinking. Call it Uber.
And they probably make some pretty good money, but I don't feel like that's our, our role. No, and I don't wanna mess with it.
So I would say, yeah, the same way you mentioned this, the obligations you think you need to do and take the rest of the board, let us know, get them paid off. Do not overspend the cash. You, you've seen that, and that's, that's why I pulled that up.
I'm sure that. The logic of that isn't there. It's kind of a combination, as I said.
Just a little. No? Can I have your signatures for the drivers, please? Becky put this in.
For what?
This is for the drivers. To pay the drivers, since she does send those checks. Other invoices are not on that just record.
In my day, if I was like that, I mean, I'd never, usually pointing somebody in the bunch or spoken with, takes over, drives home.
Yeah.
But I can't, come get me, come out there. And then I'll call you and you pick me up.
And then get paid for this.
And this is kind of.
Yeah. Thank you.
I wouldn't have enough bird. And plus I do. All of that. There's that kind of rig running around doing all that stuff and all that.